Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gostown Planning Board Meeting, July 25, 2013. We have a few things, important issues on our agenda tonight, but let's start off with Roll Call, if you would, please.
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil Devanz is Selectman.
Chris NATO.
Yellow Brick Recording Secretary.
Scott Calendar.
Mark Warden.
Richard Meany.
Cal Pratt.
And my name is John Heikel. I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. We have alternates sitting with us this evening, and as long as regular members of the board don't come, then they will be sitting and voting. We have plenty now.
We have one extra.
We have one extra, yes. So we will be rotating on vote to keep everything fair and everyone happy.
Seeing to announce.
Please state your name and...
Leah Walczko.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for making it tonight. Let's just look at the minutes of the last meeting, if we would, please. You've all had them in your pact review, I assume.
Motion to approve. Second.
Richard. Calvin Pratt and Scott Calendar to the, as the voting alternate for this one, please. Do we have any comments, questions on that motion? To approve, the minutes, all set? Great, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That's a seven, zero, zero. Now, we have a Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission Membership Fee for 2013-14 of $11,102.49. How many take a vote on this tonight? Do we have...
Actually, I don't think you vote on that. It's just kind of an FYI.
Is it a, does the, if I may, does the Selectmen Board ask for a recommendation from the Planning Board on that?
No, it's typically just the fees are given to us by the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. I think the Selectmen vote whether or not to be a member of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, but this is provided to the Planning Board for their information as to how much the fees are. It's based on population, so, you know, whatever our population numbers are, we'll get a certain fee for that. And if our neighboring towns have a lesser population, they'll get a lesser fee, probably.
I understand that, but maybe Phil knows this. When does that come up in budget discussions? Does it through the Budget Committee or the Selectmen decide?
When we get the bill from Southern New Hampshire.
And do you have to approve it, paying for it?
It's up to the, yeah, it's up to the Board of Selectmen.
Has it already been approved for this year?
We have not discussed anything with budget.
It actually comes out of the Planning Department's regular budget every year. So it's a budgeted item every year that we...
So it says action needed. Is that, there is no action needed on this?
No.
Okay, we're all set. We don't make a recommendation of the planning to the Selectmen?
Yeah, I was gonna recommend, maybe we take a closer look at it and maybe not support it this year. But if we don't have any say in it, then I guess they'll bring it up with the Selectmen.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to comment on that line? Okay, with that, we'll move on to number three. Recommendation requested by the Board of Selectmen for building a duplex on Class VI Road for McFarland Lane, map 42, lot 74. Brian, what do you have to come up with with this one?
Okay, so I put a small packet of information in front of you with a two-page memo, one-and-a-half page memo. Basically, it's, we received an application for, to do a duplex on McFarland Road. McFarland Road is a Class VI road, which Class VI roads are not maintained by the town. And this, the New Hampshire statutes actually require any request that is for a building or, you know, building permit on a Class VI road or a private road or anything like that, has to first go through some review and approval from the Selectmen. Prior to that, it also requires that the Planning Board have an opportunity to review and comment to the Selectmen on that application. So basically, I'm providing the information to you tonight to be able to determine whether or not you would like to review and comment on it. Essentially, what the application is for, and they came to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, they obtained a variance to be able to do a duplex. This lot is a non-conforming lot due to size and frontage, but what they're proposing is to utilize the existing structure and basically just split it into two units. So the first floor of the structure will be the first unit, and the second floor will be the second unit. It'll be a smaller unit. It'll be still considered a duplex unit because it exceeds our 650 rule for accessory dwelling units, but it's gonna be basically a one-bedroom unit on the top and then a three-bedroom unit on the bottom. And so, again, all of the square footage of the house is what will be encompassed by the two units in the end. They may have to do like an extra exit, like a stairs or something, from the top down in order to meet the building codes for egress and that kind of thing. But however they accomplish that, that's what, they're trying to do it, all within the existing house. So basically, that's what you have in front of you. The second and third pages are an agreement and release, and that is the agreement that the town Selectmen would sign along with the applicant. And this basically, the applicant waives the town's liability of, you know, maintaining the roads and that kind of thing. Anything bad should happen on the road because of the road wasn't maintained correctly, the town's not gonna be liable for it. And then they agree to issue a permit to allow the building to be constructed with that liability being waived. So that's essentially what this states. You have a copy of the Notice of Decision from the Zoning Board of Adjustment from earlier this month, and then you have a copy of the building permit application itself along with some, the plans that came along with it, the plot plan and the floor plans and stuff like that. So essentially, what I'm looking for is just if the Board wants to make any review and comment to the Selectmen, that you would determine if there is anything you feel needs to be addressed by the Selectmen. Otherwise, you can also just say you have no comment or whatever, so. Back to the Board.
Thank you, Brian. I have a question.
And by the way, I'm sorry, the applicant is here tonight if you have any questions for him, so.
Super, thanks. Brian, why do we, you know, why does a town, I don't know where McFarland Road goes, I know where it is, but I don't know where it goes, but why does a town keep Class VI roads on the books? Why don't we find a way, if we're not gonna need them or want them or maintain them or have these situations, why don't we find a way to either sell them or give them up to the people that are abiding those? I mean, why do we have them so we have to sign these releases of liability and things of that sort?
I don't know all the reasons why we would keep a Class VI road. I would imagine that at some point in the future, the town would expect that it could possibly become something better than a Class VI road, such as a Class V road, which we would maintain. I don't know, but the fact of the matter is, they do exist, and we have to, there are some statutes that govern what happens on those, and so that's basically what we're following here with this.
Okay, something to look into, maybe, in the future, who knows? Any other comments from the Board on this?
How many residents are on McFarland Road?
There's probably a dozen or so. I, it's a dead-end road, actually. It starts right before you get to Mountain Based Pond, and basically just dead ends. And there's people all along the pond that are there, that live along Mountain Based Pond, so.
I see that it says that there's an informal maintenance plan for the road, and this is not anything for the Board, this is just a side comment for the residents there. If anyone, it may be in your interest, it is in your interest, if this road maintenance agreement isn't recorded, to have something more professional done and recorded, if anyone goes to try to sell their house or do a refinance, the investors are going to require that. So just to help out the residents on the road, it'd be something you guys would want to think about down the road. So nothing pertaining to the Planning Board, that's just for you guys.
I'm not sure how that one works on a Class VI road. If it were a private road, that probably would be the case. Class VI is still technically owned by the town, so I know that the residents are doing the maintenance on it just because they live there, but I don't know that it would be required by somebody else.
No, I'm telling you this...
I can't say that one way or the other.
Phil?
Yeah, just to follow up on Chris's comment. What happens when you, traditionally what happens, not traditionally, but typically what happens on a Class VI road, is you have people that don't live up to their agreement, they don't contribute the required money that everybody wants to come in, and sometimes the person who's doing the plowing or doing the work on the road stops doing the work on the road because they didn't get paid. It causes a lot of problems, and then the residents come in front of the Board of Selectmen and they ask the Selectmen to step in and try to solve the problem, and we have absolutely no jurisdiction over that, so it's a tough situation, Class VI road. And one difficulty with this is when you convert a single-family to a two-family, you're like building another residence on a home, and you increase the use down there as far as snow plowing, emergency access to those, there are a lot of problems. One of these roads, it might have been McFarland, probably about 20 years ago, there was a fire, and the fire truck couldn't get through because the road wasn't properly maintained, and the house burnt down completely to the ground because they couldn't get to it.
And part of the reason why this goes through the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board for review is to avoid, you know, situations like this where if a road isn't passable, like for example, if you can't get a fire truck back in there to, you know, help these people that are living back there, that's gonna cause some trauma and some, you know, some issues down the road where you've got people living back there, but they can't get the services that they're supposed to be getting from the town. This lot happens to just be right on the corner of a Class V road. It actually does have some frontage on the Class V road, it just doesn't quite have enough to make it a conforming lot for that, but the access happens to be off of the Class VI road where the driveway is, so that's why I still made the determination that it needed to come before the Planning Board and Selectmen for their approval.
Thank you. Cal?
I just have a question. Just looking at the plan, it appears that this is an addition for perhaps a family member to live on the same property. Does it increase the footprint? And my impression from what I've been hearing around the state, and maybe you here in Gostown would know, we're probably going to be seeing more of this because of the continuing slow economy that we have, more and more children, grandparents, extended family members living in. So is the, since this is not increasing the footprint, and this, I guess, is directed toward you, Phil, how do you see this increasing the demand for services since it's an already existing structure that's simply being refurbished?
What control do we have as to how many people live in a two-family house?
We don't have control of how many live in a single-family home, I don't think, either.
But the question was, is, the implication is that this is to allow a family member to live there, okay? So if you take that assumption, when those people move on, then you have no control as to who moves into that two-family. Somebody else can buy it and rent it out to another family. So you don't have control over it.
Follow-up to that?
Certainly, follow-up.
So what's the usual problems that occur in that kind of situation?
Well, what you're doing is you're increasing the amount of volume on a non-conforming road that's not maintained by the town.
Traffic volume?
Well, traffic volume, the amount of medical calls that could call down on a road that's not maintained by the town.
Okay.
There's no control over that. I mean, what happens is, when people get together to make an agreement on a road like this that goes on into perpetuity, and you make an agreement, the people who made that agreement, they move, things change in their life, those people don't maintain that agreement. If they maintain and they say that, everybody in here, we've got 10 residences on this road, and everybody's gonna contribute $200, okay? So you contract with somebody who's gonna plow the road. That man who plows, or a woman who plows the road, they wanna get paid. If not everybody contributes their amount of money, you don't have the full funds to plow the road. So if a guy says that it's gonna cost you $1,200 for me to plow the road for the winter, and you say, "Well, I only got $1,000," what does he do? Does he say, "Okay, I'll take that, I'll be short, you owe me the money." He does it the first year, he never gets paid, the second season comes, well, now we don't have, because somebody else doesn't contribute the money, now you have less, so, well, you owe me for last year, now you want, give me less. This is what happens. And then the road doesn't get plowed, something happens down there, the ambulance can't get through, the fire truck can't get through, something happens down there, and it causes issues. And this is not the only road, we have many roads that are like that.
I was just wondering, though, what is the town's liability in those cases, since, I mean, I hear that it's technically a town road, but we really don't maintain it. So if it's not maintained, and emergency services like Fire or Medical can't get in there, is the town at any liability risk for...
Well, I don't... When the community has situations like this that you add more to the problem, is the only point that I'm trying to make. You're adding more to that type of a problem. It's not a good situation, it's not a nice situation to be in on either end. Either the person who suffered the loss, or who you're going to to try to resolve the loss, and when you go to somebody to try to get some type of solving of your issue, and a person, and there's nothing that you can do, it's just not a nice situation.
Might I suggest that this is probably the right venue to come up with an idea? As my earlier statement said, I think you're gonna see more of these occurring as the years go on, because I think the economy's gonna remain sluggish for a while, and people are gonna wanna keep, are gonna wanna try to combine, as they have traditionally, many generations in one home. So maybe this Board needs to think, or Brian, maybe you need to think ahead toward that. Do you see any problems with this plan as it's set up now, outside of, you know, the unforeseen future that we can't determine?
Are you asking me?
Yes, please.
Well, my thought is, it's an existing house. The square footage doesn't increase. Yes, it is an extra unit, but it's a one-bedroom unit, so I don't know that it could necessarily really gain that much more in intensity or density. And the fact that it's on the very edge, where, you know, fire trucks and police vehicles could, you know, even park on the regular road if they had to and just walk right to it, is enough of a justification to me that, you know, something like this should be allowed to be approved. The other thing is, is I mentioned in my report, there are at least two other waivers that have been approved along this road, one of them being at the very end, in the very dead end of the road. So, I mean, that's just information.
Mike, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if I'm reading the floor plans correctly, with this change, you're reducing the number of bedrooms, actually from three down to one on that level, that unit. So, actually reducing the living area.
The total bedrooms is gonna increase from four, from three to four, because there are gonna be three on the bottom floor.
Okay, okay, I got you. From three and a spare room to four and no spare. Right, that's about the same. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that number three on the agreement, Cal, that they sign, is, releases us from any, I mean, it explicitly releases the town from any liability if the fire truck doesn't get there or the ambulance doesn't arrive.
Releases everybody.
Yeah, I mean, if the town has no liability, what's this gonna say?
It absolutely does.
Yeah.
And that gets recorded, too. It's not just in some file somewhere.
It goes with the property thereafter, I take it, it like follows the...
And once that's been recorded, it's irrevocable?
If the road changed from a Class VI to a Class V, it might, I guess, just go away,
but, because then the town would start maintaining it and assume responsibility for that road.
Interesting. Okay. So we look for a motion, or do we have a public hearing first, or what?
It's no public hearing, it's just an opportunity for the Planning Board to determine if they wanna send any comments on to the Selectmen before they make their decision.
Yeah, I'd simply move that we recommend the request without comment.
Can you just make a comment if you recommend?
I don't know, I don't think it's an action item if they want. Sure. If we can do without a recommendation, all the better. Or without a motion, that's fine.
You don't need them.
Okay, withdraw it, then.
Yeah, that's good, so, Selectmen.
Took a long time to discuss, no comment. It was a good conversation.
Good for you to understand what's in your statutes.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
On, old business. There's some old business here. Map 31, lot 41, map three, lot 41, conditional use permit hearing and site plan review hearing for a proposal to build a new 47,860-square-foot dormitory at St. Anselm College located at 100 St. Anselm Drive in the residential two-zone. Brian, please.
Yeah, so, St. Anselm was here approximately a month ago, and they presented their plan to the Board to reinstate basically an approval that they had previously gotten with some minor changes. So really, it's a new application, but they did go through the process once before, and they did get an approval from the town, and the plan was signed and ready to go, and they basically opted not to build it at the time because of the economy. But basically, this is a request for 47,860-square-foot dormitory to be located on St. Anselm College campus, and there would be also an 8,170-square-foot basement. Since the first presentation a month ago, the applicant has gone back and has reconfigured their driveways and some of the parking area a little bit. They've addressed the comments from Megan and myself. There were some, a few late comments that came in, one from Fire, and they had requested that a small change be made. You can see, if you take a look on your table, you see a page that looks like this. So this is a PDF comment sheet that just came in from Fire today, asking for them to just revise the island slightly to allow for the ladder truck to be able to access, easier access. I'm not sure if it was able to access. I know they did provide a truck-turning template on this, and they designed it to be able to allow a fire truck. I'm not sure which fire truck it was, but anyway, I'll let Jeff address that. So basically, you know, that was one minor comment that came in today. And then also, Megan had forwarded on some comments that had accidentally not gotten passed on from Sewer, and that's just another email memo that's got three bullet point comments from Sewer, two on Sheet 16, and another one that just says they wanted the Sewer service to building one and two to be connected to the new Sewer main and abandon the old one entirely. So those are a few additional comments that came through after this report was sent to you. I don't know if the applicant has any concerns with any of those, but I'll let him speak to those in his presentation. As we get to the recommendations, we've already opened the public hearing, and it's open now, but once the applicant finishes his presentation, we allow for any additional public comment on this issue. And then my recommendation would be to approve the conditional use permits for, number one, allowing the college without dormitory as a permitted use by conditional use permit. And then, number two, for the, or, it's number five on your list, actually, approve a conditional use permit to exceed the amount of building footprint allowed in the residential two district, following findings. And by the way, the district requirement was 5,000 square feet, and they exceeded, I think their footprint was 12,000, something, 13,000, maybe, I can't recall.
Yeah, 13.
And so my recommendation would be to approve that. They actually did get a variance previously, that's how the rule was back then, I guess, when they originally came in, they got a variance to allow for, I think, up to 60,000 square feet of space, whereas they didn't, they weren't allowed that much back then. And then the last is approve the site plan, subject to the conditions that are listed there, conditions one through eight. And then, as we move through the discussion, we most likely want to add comments from Sewer and the ones from Fire, as well as conditions of approval on this plan. And I think the applicant's hoping for an approval tonight, just because their plan is to start construction in the beginning of August, so they're looking to get this done quickly and get ready to go. I think they've already been out there doing some survey work and other things, but, yeah, that's it. So I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Any comments from the Board before Jeff gets, no?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, just over here at you, St. Anselm Drive, this is the second driveway into the property. The proposed dormitory is here, it's 115 feet back off of St. Anselm Drive, so it's well off the road. It's a three-story building, as you're looking at it from St. Anselm Drive. There's a section of basement here that will house the resident director apartment down there, and some utility rooms and laundry, and a, kind of like a little gathering room or whatever.
or whatever. From here, it'll just be three-story, from here you're looking at a three-story building. Basically what's been done since the previous, since the last meeting when we came in, we had these with us, but we finalized or formalized the filing with the staff so that they have the buildings again. St. Anselm College has a architectural theme, this is consistent with it, with the brick and so forth. This is as you're looking at it in from the campus itself, looking down in this direction at the front door. The other thing we had had last week but hadn't submitted on time was the lighting, that's in the package. It's the same lighting that had come through before previously. Again, they use a decorative style light on this type of location on campus being walkways. This is intended to predominantly be, put the dormitory up for one hundred and fifty new beds. Again, St. Anselm College has chosen to stay in the range of two thousand students, is kind of their top level and that bounces fifty or a hundred students in either direction, but they are not looking to just continue to grow. They had something in a range of sixteen hundred students on campus. This will improve or provide, loosen up some of where they had triples and so forth, this will provide capability of having better housing on campus. Where, one of the other changes we've done is, we had four parking spaces tucked in the front here, this driveway as you come in is relatively steep, it's a seven or eight percent as you come up and normally you wouldn't just park on something with that kind of a pitch on it. But again, what we wanted this to be is a walkway under, you know, almost circumstances, we put these collapsible bollards there so emergency services can drive through, but keep the students out of that area. So what we finally came up with is we shifted the parking around the corner here where it's a little bit flatter and moved the handicap spaces that were here to face in off of here, I had to pull them in a little bit so again I can have a little apron and then flatten it out so that we meet ADA criteria for the parking spaces and a connecting walkway there. So again, lighting remained exactly the same, these are existing trees out in this location and we've supplemented them with some additional plantings there. Other than that, this is what we were working with is fire and police and what the fire department sent in that sketch was basically projecting this and saying you'd like me to pave this little corner. I agree that I'll, as I, if you make it a condition of approval, I'll work with him to satisfy his access needs. I don't believe, what I'd rather not do is open this thing up too wide because then it's tough for me to keep students and other people from driving down there where I don't want them to. I believe there's adequate pavement there from me running truck movements through here, but again, I agree to work with the fire chief, if he needs a little bit more pavement, we'll provide it. If I can convince him to leave it as is, that he has adequate room as shown, then I'd like to do that. Other than that, the comments that came from Megan were some comments on the SEER and we have addressed those and worked with Mike Birko, who submitted our SEER application and, but if you want to put those on it, we meet the SEER department's comments to their satisfaction, that's fine. Other than that, there really isn't anything, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
I don't know who this is a question for, but on the email or whatever sheet that is that you provide to us, Brian, the text that's not in bold print, that's the response from the designer, correct, for concern?
Yeah, that's coming from TF Moran, so they responded to our comments, said what they did as a way to address it.
Did you see that?
Yeah.
Dr. McCarthy.
Yep.
He's my guy. What you have with these conditional use permits, it's a very unique situation, the act of it was satisfied. Goffstown has left St. Anselm College in an R-two zoning district and I would say eight years ago, we approached the planning board at that time and said, you know, it would really make sense to rezone St. Anselm College to create its own regulations and apply to a college, not try to apply residential regulations to a college district. At the time, we came in for the hockey arena and we had to go through zoning board saying that wasn't a college use, which didn't make a lot of sense. So, you know, what we have is, we have a conditional use permit to allow a larger footprint where obviously we have buildings greater than this on campus, this is very consistent with what's on campus. And the second one is the use to allow dormitory use in the residential district but on a college campus. So, as far as meeting the criteria, as far as consistent with the neighborhood, again, just this parcel for the college is a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-four acres and they have several parcels out here. So I think they, off the top of my head, I can't give you the exact number of acres, but it's over two hundred. They have land in Bedford as well. This is very consistent and what have you and the view from St. Anselm Drive, again, we're not pushing this right up on the street or anything. You were maintaining, again, one hundred and fifteen feet of lawn area here and, you know, they have, that's kind of one of their signature points as you drive down on St. Anselm Drive is what you're looking at is that very well landscaped and maintained lawn area and the buildings are looking at it. So, if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
That's good. Somebody wants somebody. Oh, it's, Longus, sorry.
The bad phone.
Any questions for?
For Jeff.
I do.
Yeah, Phil.
On the lighting, can you just briefly give us an overview of the lighting that you didn't have last time?
Yeah, basically you're looking for photometric plans, we had them with us, we hadn't resubmitted them, it's the same lighting that was previously approved. It's a series of, again, the decorative poles, when I say decorative, the metal pole with like an acorn shaped fixture.
Typically what's up there?
What's existing now? Exactly. They have two types of fixtures on campus, decorative which are in most places where you're looking at pedestrian and if you have some remote parking, they go to the shoebox stuff. These do meet a cutoff requirement, so inside that acorn shape, there is a shield and what have you as far as directing light down.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, no? All right, thank you very much.
Are you all set or?
I am, yeah. If there are no comments, we really, we are pushing for an approval, if you have any, if you need me to go through any of the conditional use items, just let me know.
Probably, I, we've all read this, I think we're all.
Leave this up.
Leave it up if you like.
Okay.
Are there any, anybody in the public that would like to comment on this or speak to it in favor? No? Okay, comment, public comment I guess has been open and closed.
You ready for motions?
Ready for motions.
All right, I'll try the first one. I move that we approve a conditional use permit authorized by section three point one one, table B five of the zoning ordinance, which shows college with or without dormitories as permitted use by conditional use permit, with findings A through F. As printed in the sheet Brian gave.
Motion from?
I'll second that.
Motion from Richard, second from Phil. Want to speak to your motion, comments, questions, anybody on the board, Phil? Okay, let's take a vote.
Can you tell me who your voting alternates are?
My voting alternates, we haven't had any votes yet, so we'll go ahead.
I did it on the minutes.
All right, so, let's have.
And then are the voting alternates going to be for each motion or are they going to be for the whole issue?
They're going to be for the whole issue. So why don't we, why don't we alternate an alternate and we will have Leah sit in for Cal. Thank you very much, but you're certainly welcome to stay right here and enjoy.
Don't go anywhere.
So the voting alternates will be Scott, Calendar and Leah Waltsko. We have a motion in front of us, we'll take a vote, all in favor on this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Seven to zero.
Make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to exceed the amount of building footprint allowed in residential two district with findings A through F, as printed on page nine of the handout we got from Brian.
I'll second that.
Motion from Richard again, second from Phil. Any comments, questions? Take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? Seven to zero. Do we have another motion?
Sure, if you want. Make a motion to approve the site plan subject to conditions precedent one through six and conditions subsequent seven, eight. As listed on page nine, handout provided by Brian.
One question. The applicant said that he would do this if we made his approval subject to working that out.
Working with the fire chief to whatever he needed.
Yeah, I, the reason I asked the question earlier about the comment, the comment sheet is that it said sidewalks have been revised to accommodate fire department vehicles and the two access points for the fire department for proposed dormitory have been revised and widened to ensure that there is sufficient space for fire department vehicle access to the building. And because those comments were there, that's why I felt unnecessary to add.
Yeah, but there's two other things, one is relocating a hydrant and the other one is that the bollards have to be able to bend in parallel.
I think you already mentioned that the bollards will tip when the fire department goes over it. I didn't recall the hydrant discussion in the presentation.
Well, the only reason I brought it up was that the applicant said that they, that they brought it up as a suggestion of putting in instead they would work with them.
They said he would work with them, but he also mentioned to us that he believes that the plan that he has right now is sufficient, so.
But see, that's the key, believes.
Well, then, there can be differences of opinion between any town office and an applicant and if the applicant's going to work with the town on this, I believe that the answers provided by, by the applicant in response to all of the department's questions were sufficient and that the plans were, the plans were modified to answer those questions.
When were the plans modified?
It says retractable bollards right here on the sheet.
I know, but they have to be retractable in a proper direction, which is important. And that's why on here it says must and must is underline and my only point is that this is dated the twenty-fifth, which is today. These are prior to the twenty-fifth. That's, that's the only point I'm bringing up. And applicants, the one who suggested putting it in there, so that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up.
I don't think he suggested putting it in there, he said if it was put in there that he would work with the fire department.
Well, he said he brought it up, to me that's a suggestion.
All right, I'll second the motion.
We have a second from Mark.
I already did second.
You did?
Yeah.
I didn't hear it.
Phil's second.
I thought I seconded.
No, you made a comment.
All right, I apologize.
You did.
He seconded.
I thought you made a comment, okay. Phil's the second.
Can I ask quickly?
You can, Brian.
If it's possible, I forgot to add one more thing that I had discussed with the applicant prior to coming tonight and I forgot to tell you about it too. Those four parking spaces that are over by Brady Hall, when I was reviewing them, noticed that the driveway that they, that you access those parking spots is not wide enough and I asked them to either widen the driveway or make them angled stalls and they agreed that they would make them angled stalls so they wouldn't have to widen the driveway. And I have emails to that effect, but I forgot to give them to you tonight, but I would just like to make that a condition of approval as well, that the four stalls next to Brady Hall be made angled stalls.
Did you ask for that to be subsequent or?
As a condition precedent. Yeah. You can ask them if they want to speak to it.
Just get the thumbs up from the applicant that that's an open thing.
Certainly.
Okay. So I will amend my motion to have the angled stalls as Brian just mentioned.
I'll second that.
Motion Richard, second Phil.
Do you also want to add in the comments from the SEER as conditions?
Which ones?
Those were the three bullet point, it's a Megan Terrio email, looks like this, it was on your table tonight.
Don, if you could just make a comment, it says, I think, Jessica mentioned, you know, they approved made the civil commission, address civil commissions concerned, it could sound like they already talked about it before, but, um, I'm looking at more generic the, you know, all the stuff, so they can just do one, say, address concerns from the SEER department for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Will we ask the applicant again?
Yes, you may.
Those are comments from the engineer, the people you said?
Yes.
Okay, I'll amend.
Okay, amend.
That's fine.
Amend the motion to include?
Comments from Megan Terrio dated in Thursday, July twenty-five email at five fifty-six p.m.
But not the fire department.
Not the fire department.
Okay, Phil, you still second that?
Oh, yeah.
Any comments, questions on that motion? Let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, new business, map eighteen, lot fifty-nine, conditional use permit hearing and site plan review hearing for a proposal to amend an existing approved site plan for the Little Green Mall to allow for a restaurant use, Chiggy's Place in the existing commercial building and waive the parking requirements. building, and waive the parking requirements. Cynthia and Michael Kenny, applicant, and RDM Properties LLC property owner located at 571 Mast Road, Zoned Commercial. Brian, what do you?
So, this is a little bit of a different and strange application because you really don't have much to review in your packet, other than my report. And obviously, there's an old site plan in there. It is a site plan amendment request. However, they've asked for multiple waivers. This is kind of just the way we set it up. We, I went back and forth on the way to do this, and I originally had wanted them to just apply for a waiver of the site plan requirement, as I've done with some other folks in the past. And, you know, per some recent guidance from the town attorney, wanted to hold a public hearing along with that so that we didn't get into trouble with the butters on making determinations on, you know, things that maybe should have gone through a site plan in the public review process. So, to that effect, we opted to have them go through the site plan process instead of doing the waiver with a public hearing, because the waiver with the public hearing isn't a formalized process yet. We haven't gone through and amended our regulations to say, okay, if you're going to ask for a waiver from the site plan regs, then, you know, here's your process. So, right now, the process is for the waiver of site plan requirement, there's no public hearing. And so, you know, in order to do a public hearing, we felt it was necessary to have them apply for site plan amendment and go through that process. So, just some background on that. This is an existing building, Little Green Mall. It's been there for thirty or plus years. I can't remember the date on the existing site plan. It's in front of you. It's a hand drawn drawing, which tells me that it's old.
It's like a alley back here.
But basically, what they're looking to do is change the use from, in one of the units within that commercial strip plaza to be a restaurant, whereas it used to be retail space. And what happened is, in my review of our regulations, I noticed, okay, restaurants require additional parking more than what retail space does. And in our regulations, it states that if it requires more parking, then it's considered a change of use, and you've got to go through site plan process. So that's what they're asking for today, is a review of the site plan to determine whether or not that's an appropriate use for that site. They haven't drawn a plan to show any changes on the exterior, because they're not proposing really any changes on the exterior. They're wanting to just work within the existing site, whatever parking is there, they believe is adequate. And, you know, I've looked at the site. I don't believe it's really going to be an issue. They're not going to be bringing in that much more traffic than what was there. And there are some.
Well, they hope to.
Well.
With any luck.
Yeah, well, it would be good for them, I guess. But there are also some uses within that complex that have less parking than what they are allotted per the site plan for their square footage. So, some of that evens out a little bit, and, you know, on, they've provided some calculations, I think, that kind of detail out, you know, how much parking they feel like they're going to need. And it doesn't seem to be overly using up a lot of additional space or needing additional space for parking. Their busiest time being on a Saturday morning or Sunday morning. Sunday mornings, most of the business in there are going to be closed. Saturday morning, maybe the only time when you get tight with some parking, but again, you know, if those other businesses aren't open, there may be one or two that are not open on Saturdays as well, so you might be able to even it out there. So, what they're asking for waivers on is the proposed plan. Obviously, with the proposed plan, you would waive the topography. They're not changing anything in the parking area, so the drainage study, they're asking for a waiver on that. Traffic study, the use really isn't changing that much. I mean, there's already a current use there, and you're maybe going to have a similar amount if maybe a couple more cars, but it's not really enough to necessarily generate a new traffic study for that lot. So, in my opinion, that's not necessarily required and could be waived. And then, the site plan contents, again, if you're not drawing a site plan, then, you know, that section's really something that should be waived, because you can't draw a site plan and put all the contents on it if you're not drawing a site plan. So, basically, the requirement for the parking regulations goes from one stall for every 200 square feet for retail, down to one stall for every 75 square feet for restaurant use. Currently, there are eight stalls already designated for that space. If you calculate the square footage, 1,600 square feet, you know, one per 200 equals eight stalls. Now, if you're calculating it with the same square footage, with one per 75 square feet, you get 22 stalls. So, that kind of leaves a deficit of 14 stalls as to, you know, that's what they're basically over the requirement on, so. And again, I somewhat went through that, but I feel that with the uses that are in that plaza, I don't know that it's really going to be an issue. Most times when you drive by there, the parking lot's fairly empty, and so, you know, maybe this will fill it up a little bit, and maybe that'll actually get some business to the ones that are in there that need some business. So, I mean, it may be a really good thing to have that parking lot full, and, you know, people having trouble finding a place to park.
Brian, is this space going in the front building?
Yes.
Is this the corner where that dry cleaner used to be?
It's where, I'm not sure if the dry cleaner was there. It's where the Yankee Candle was.
Yankee, okay.
Yeah, Yankee Candle's on the far right.
Far right on the front building, facing the street, okay.
As you're facing the building, right.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So, there's some comments from engineering that are in your report. I'll allow Megan to go through those if she wants to. One of the issues on the site is ADA compliance. It's an existing complex, and so ADA is something that we try to work with. As uses change, you try to have them upgrade a portion of it. In fact, I think that's the rule for, in the building codes, that you do have them upgrade something. But it doesn't necessarily have to come up to 100% ADA compliant. So in this case, what happened prior to these, Chiggy's wanting to come in here, there used to be a cigar bar that was trying to go in there. And they had gone in there and actually upgraded the bathroom. So now the bathroom is a fully ADA compliant bathroom, which the building inspector considered to be enough to be their 20% upgrade for ADA compliance. That being said, there may be some requirements to have additional access based on fire codes and that kind of thing. They might have to have another egress to the building. So they may have to do some type of secondary access or egress. And, you know, if they're going to do that, it might be a case where you would want them to have to build a ramp so that it's ADA compliant, so that the building, handicap people could actually, you know, get up to the building via the handicap ramp. So, that's a consideration that, you know, will have to be taken into account as we go through with the building department process. Part of that determination is based on how many occupants can be in the building. And I know they were working on trying to get some numbers over to the fire department to be, for him to be able to make his determination on that. But, you know, that's something that the building department and the fire department will kind of be paying attention to, at least. The fire department comments that he had provided initially are also in your report there. Most of them are building-related comments. He did speak to the occupancy, though, and not knowing the number of people that are allowed to be in there, you know, he needed that to be able to help him make some determinations. From planning standpoint, really, the only issue from planning was the parking issue. And, you know, I feel like that that's an issue that the planning board could waive, and we would be fine. And that would be in addition to the other waivers as part of the application process. So, the parking issue would be waived via conditional use permit. That's kind of the last, well, the second to the last thing on your recommendations list, number seven. That's the way that the zoning ordinance allows parking to be waived from the planning board. Otherwise, typically, something in the zoning ordinance is waived by a variance from the zoning board of adjustment. In this case, it does specifically call out that the planning board can waive it by conditional use permit. So, I'll just run through the recommendations really fast. Number one, waive the five waivers that are listed there, proposed plan, topography, drainage study, traffic study, and the site plan contents. Number two, find that this site plan does not have regional impact. Number three, accept the proposed site plan amendment as complete and ready for review. Number four, your and applicant's presentation. Five, open the public hearing. Six, resolve any remaining issues. Seven would be the conditional use permit on the parking, to waive the parking requirements. And then, number eight, approve the site plan amendment with, to allow the, let's see, approve the site plan amendment by changing the use of the front building to allow a restaurant use in this space, subject to the following conditions. And I have five conditions listed. Basically, shall, the applicant shall follow all building and fire codes based on the occupancy designation that is assigned. Number two, install handicap signs in front of each handicap stall that's already on-site, and re-stripe stalls that, so that they are clearly visible. Number three, all appropriate permits, inspections, and certificate of occupancy shall be obtained prior to opening. Number four, if this space continues to be used as a restaurant, within two years of occupancy of this space, the sidewalk and building entrance to this space shall be made ADA accessible by building or reconstructing ramps to meet ADA requirements for commercial establishments. And number five, approval from Manchester Water Works. In your packet, you should have also seen a letter from the sewer commission stating that they were good with what they were proposing. Initially, actually, they had come in saying, well, we're going to need you to add three more units worth of capacity and pay for those three units, each at $5,000 a pop, which that was a little surprising. And then, come to find out, they had gone back through their records, and a long time ago, this site had been considered for a restaurant with actually double the amount of seats that they were looking at. And they had already paid for capacity back then to allow for that type of use. So, that was kind of a good thing for the applicants, they didn't have to come up with some extra cash upfront. So, that's my recommendations, and that concludes my report.
Mark, Richard.
One question. Brian, at the bottom of page 11, you use the phrase in reference to handicap stalls on-site. Use the phrase "more compliant," that signs need to be placed in front in order to be more compliant. Can you explain the use of the term "more compliant" as opposed to just "compliant"?
It would just be compliant, I guess.
Okay, so that if.
Yeah.
So if the signs aren't placed at eye level, or whatever the rule is, it's non-compliant? Is that what you're saying?
Well, right now, there are just no signs for the stalls. So.
Painted.
They're just painted on the spot. And I think the paint is fading in the parking lot, too, so that was the recommendation and the conditions, the stalls be painted.
Do we, on the thought of that, do we require signs townwide for everybody?
Yes. That's an ADA requirement for parking stalls, that every parking stall have a sign like that.
There's a size and a height.
Not just painted, it has to be a certain height.
Right, exactly. Certain size, certain height.
That was statute last year.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a nice question. Senator, requiring me? Any comments, questions?
No motion?
I think we have to do the public hearing first.
I think we'd like to do a public, yeah.
And the presentation from the applicant.
Right. Yeah, let's hear from the applicant. How's that?
We hear from the applicant before we accept it as complete and ready for review?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what you were talking about for motions?
Yeah.
Complete and ready for review, sure.
Okay. All right, yes.
Who's voting? What? Okay, great. I wanted to change that, yes. Scott, you'll be sitting out this time. Cal and Leah will be voting on this one. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make this a lengthy motion. I move that we waive proposed plan, topography, drainage study, traffic study, site plan contents, that we find that this site plan proposal does not have regional impact, and that we accept this proposed site plan amendment as complete and ready for review. Second.
Motion from?
No discussion.
Richard?
Finally.
Okay. Second from.
Well, thank yours.
Right, thank you. Second from Mark. Any discussion, questions? No? Okay, let's take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Great. Seven to zero. Thank you. And the two, Cal and Leah, will be voting on anything else that we do with this evening. Okay. Applicants, please state your name and.
Sure. Michael and Cynthia Kenny. We reside here in Grafton on the 501 Mast Road, and what we're proposing is to put in a 42-seat restaurant at 571 Mast Road. I think Brian pretty much summed everything up. The way we're looking at things, just to speak a minute about the parking, we don't think there's going to be a tremendous impact or any impact at all because of our clientele. We don't do fast food like the McDonald's or the Dunkin' Donuts in that area. We do home-cooked food. Most of our clientele customers show up two, three, four at a time as opposed to one vehicle at a time. So I don't think we're going to have any impact on the parking there at all. I think the parking will be adequate just there. We're willing to comply with the ADA rules. We think we've got the seating and the square footage all squared away for the fire department, so we could fall well below that 50 mark, or at least a few below it, which will eliminate a lot of the additional site requirements. And just to make note, there are two full handicap bathrooms in there right now.
Right, for men and women, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Could you do, just describe your business a little bit?
Sure. We've been in business for nine years. We had an existing business on Kelly Street in Manchester. We've been there nine years.
I knew I seen the sign somewhere. I'd seen the sign somewhere, I was wondering.
There was a fire in the building. The fire had absolutely nothing to do with the restaurant. It was in the basement part of another side of the building, was an apartment building and an office as well. We're forced to move right now. We'd like to get somewhere in the general area. Our customers are pretty much, you know, steady customers. They come, some of you might have even been in the restaurant before we selected the site on Mast Road, because it's an ideal location. It fits well within what we're looking for. We're small, we want to stay that way. One of the reasons we've been able to survive through this rough economy is simply because we've kept a low overhead, and we certainly intend to continue doing that. So, everything is well within our means, we, we hope we'll be successful there, but we don't have any intention of growing, and we can't possibly grow beyond what's already there. Unless we're to rent another spot, knock down a wall, or something like that. And it's really not something we care to do. Basically, we, we run the business, keep the business, just to keep a, you know, a steady income. My wife manages the entire business herself, I have a full-time job elsewhere. But, uh, the site is what it is, we've got some really good data for the fire department to go over. And as I said, we're, we're quite confident the square footage won't go over what we'll need, so we won't have to do a lot of the, the big stuff, so to speak, another entrance and so forth.
Okay, and now your breakfast and lunch?
Breakfast, lunch, we open at six, close at two. On Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays, it's from seven to one. I believe what, Saturdays?
Saturdays are six to one, Sunday's seven to one.
Seven to one. Sunday's the busiest day of the week, the parking, the whole lot is deserted at that time.
We actually have hours of all the other businesses on the thing, if you guys would like to take a look at one of those, take one and pass it around.
And they're all kind of staggered hours there, I don't see any problems during the week with parking at all. As I said, breakfast, lunch, um, the way the mall's set up there, and all the times of the other businesses, it's, um, it's set up pretty well, so that I don't think you have an overload of anything at any point in time.
Sunday, the, the parking lot's all ours, we've already talked with all the other clients in there, or the other patrons or whatever. We have, we've viewed the parking lot on several occasions, different days, different times of days. And like Brian said, there's never more than, you know, five, eight, 10 cars there at a time. And the parking lot is actually pretty big, it, it's a strong building, so there's plenty of parking to accommodate everybody in the building, so.
And there's also a turnaround behind the building, where you can get trucks in and out, to circle right around, in and out.
And my deliveries come at 5:00 AM in the morning, so it doesn't interrupt with anybody else's business. My produce is there by five, my big delivery, my big truck is there by 5:30. The only one that, I mean Coke, but I mean Coke delivers to McDonald's, too, so it's right there.
Great, is that, uh, this is, this is a good chance, people are watching, and we're going to, you know, good, good chance to promote your business and, and explain to us what you're, what you're planning on doing, so. If you are satisfied with that, I.
Does anybody have questions for us?
Yeah.
When are you looking to open?
As soon as you guys say yes. As soon as you guys say yes.
Are you, are you ready over there, you have?
No, we've got quite a bit of work to do, we've got some electrical and some plumbing to do.
We have our plumber and electrician waiting on you guys to say yes, so they can pull permits tomorrow.
Is there going to be a public hearing?
Right, or is this it?
There will be a public hearing after they, after they present.
Wish we could. Breakfast after this. Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's, uh, open up, open up a public hearing now. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? And give us their opinions of this project. Yes, sir, would you mind?
The food's pretty good.
That's an endorsement by, uh?
That's an endorsement.
Okay. That was Mr. Alan Yeaton, for the record. Would anybody else like to speak from the public? They're all set, okay, we'll close the public hearing then. Do we have a?
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit. We see the amount of parking required in the commercial district with findings A through F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Richard. All stated, second by Mark. Any questions, comments on that? Take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, abstentions, seven to zero, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan amendment by changing the use of the front building to allow a restaurant use in this space, subject to the following conditions, conditions one, two, one, two, and three as conditions precedent, and conditions four and five as conditions subsequent as listed in the planning document.
I'll second that.
Motion from Richard, second from Phil. Questions, comments on that motion? Let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, seven to zero. We're done?
Great.
Good, good luck.
Good luck.
The chickies will be on Mass Road.
Thank you.
Good luck.
No, thank you.
Get open soon.
Thank you very much.
Looking very forward to it.
Yeah.
Yes, have a good night, thank you.
I wish some people from McDonald's would park there and say, hey, I'm going to walk over there and have some good.
Yeah, that's going to happen.
The girl would say, hey, we can have microwave food, or we can have.
Things, Brian, just for us or me, and, you know, when, when overflow, parking, that, that's a, that's a dispute between two. Do we ever get brought back into these things, or, I mean, they have great food, and we know, you know.
On, on a lot of site plans, we require them to just either have a condition of approval or a note on the plan that just says, you know, if parking becomes an issue, then the planning board reserves a right to revisit this plan. I don't know if that's ever been an issue that the planning boards had to do, because I don't know that Goffstown's really ever had a parking problem, per se.
Right.
I really can't see they're bringing this here, I drive by it all the time, I mean, yeah, someone for Sunday. Parking lot's always empty.
I, I tend to believe that our parking regulations are a little too, too restrictive, like, they, they require too many more parking spaces than what really we need, so, yeah.
You're right. I hope everyone's parking.
Their new parking's going to be better than Kelly Street, that's for sure.
It's better than Kelly Street.
That's a common theme across the country.
In fact, I agree with what you said earlier, Brian, that their being there may help the other tenants in that building for visibility.
Yeah, I mean, if they have to park a little bit further away, they're going to park in front of some other business, maybe they've never seen them there before, maybe they'll walk in there just because they're like, oh.
Have breakfast, get their hair done, go get a tan, and they're in, they're in drive.
Get a job and education.
Right, this is great.
Great addition to the neighborhood.
It's a good line of sight from McDonald's parking lot, too, you really can't see until you get in here what's in there.
Get this cup of coffee, I think it's a 60-ounce, I don't know what it is, but it's a big coffee, it's real good. Let's see, any other business, we've got rules and procedures.
Well, we got one more item on the public hearings, new business.
Oh, gee, Liz, yes, we do. Map 38, lot 377. I thought he was just here to watch.
I thought he was just here to watch, for the endorsement and easement.
Right, just came for the eggs.
Map 38, lot 77, conceptual hearing for a proposed new entrance addition to the front of Sully's supermarket, located on 10 North Main Street, owner John H. Denoncourt, trust Zoned Village Commercial. Brian, what can we say?
Well, so, what you have in your packet is, uh, I guess, an application for a conceptual review for Sully's to basically add, like, a little entrance.
Vestibule?
Vestibule, yeah, that's a good word, thank you.
That's a good idea.
And so, uh, they, they, they're going to need some changes exterior to the building in order to do this. They'll add some additional feet, they're going to bump it out about five or six feet. And then, um, they're, they're also looking to move the door down to the corner and have it kind of a little angled access. One of the things that this does affect on-site is parking. It, it actually decreases the parking on-site by six spaces, which I felt was kind of my biggest concern about, you know, making any changes on-site. And I felt like this, that's why the planning board really should be the ones looking at this and, and reviewing this. Otherwise, I mean, they're not really adding a ton of square footage to the building, they're not really doing any kind of change to the building other than, you know, they're going to have to decrease some parking spaces on-site, and they're going to have to rearrange things a little bit based on the new design of the new structure. So, uh, Alan Yeaton is here to, to speak to it. I've provided a few comments on, on there regarding my thoughts. Basically, it's, a lot of it regarding parking. They may have to add some mallards or something to that effect in the front of the building in order to keep cars from running into it, based on the new design. And, because they're going to have a drive aisle right up, right up next to the building instead of separation of some parking and the entranceway and then, in the building. And then, um, one, one concern that I had, and I made note of it in here, is that they may need some variances to relocate the signs that are currently on the top of the building. Our ordinance doesn't allow for roof-mounted signs, and these are roof-mounted signs. So, once you remove them, then they no longer become grandfathered signs. So, you know, with a, with a redesign, even if they were to try to, you know, take them down and move them forward to the same spot on the roof, but just further forward, that's still considered not being grandfathered anymore, because they've changed the position of it, and therefore, the grandfathering is gone, is gone. Engineering did send, just a, a quick thing about, about what they were thinking. It says DPW does not have many comments for this entrance addition to the site plan. Expect that parking spaces on the plan did not seem to match with what was out in the field. I think we had an existing count of 56 or so. Mike Eargo noted that if there were, if there are over 50 parking spots, then three handicap spots are needed, not just two, as proposed. And then, entering and exiting from this site is somewhat dangerous, because there are options to, but there are options to address that through the CMAC grant possibly, so nothing should be done at this point. And then a question, are there cross-access easements for the parking spots on the other adjacent lots? And she lists the lot numbers. You can see, if you look at the site plan that Mr. Yeaton has provided, there are multiple lot lines that go through the parking area. And he brought that up to me when we were out on the site, and he was concerned that that, you know, might get into a hairy mess, and they don't want it to necessarily delay them a whole ton. But, you know, this is an opportunity for the planning board to, you know, make sure that landowners have appropriate rights to whatever it does encroach on their land. I'm not sure, I, I was a little bit, um, maybe misunderstood by, I, I had thought that Associated Grocers had purchased the property. Maybe Mr. Yeaton can, can clarify that, but when I asked Patty, she had noted on here that it was still John Denoncourt, and I think, I think what she had said was that they leased the property, but they purchased Sully's, the business. And so, that might be just something to think about as well. I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but if it is the same owner, because I, I believe John Denoncourt owns the surrounding properties, I'm not sure if it's all of them or not, but if he owns them already, then he can't really grant an easement to himself, so that might be a non-issue. Anyway. Those were the comments from staff. I also gave you an email that just came in late today from Main Street. Cynthia Bovert is one of the Main Street, um, design team members. And she just wrote that she thinks site access should be addressed as well. Currently, patrons can access the parking lot for all but 25 to 30 feet in the vicinity of the existing sign, i.e. there are cars pulling in and out everywhere. At a minimum, it would be nice for the entire parking lot to be looked at for re-striping to control entrance and exit of cars. I have no problem with reducing the spaces for aesthetics. Safety for access would probably result in the loss of more space, spaces. Ace Hardware was given a reduction in parking due to site, and it works. Perhaps those numbers should be looked at. Sully's is a strong draw for the Village, they, they deserve flexibility for a good design that benefits the store and community. The CMAC committee also discussed Sully's access, it is a problem for the solving of that intersection. So. Those were the comments that I have received as of today. I think, I'll turn it back to the chair, and then we can have Mr. Yeaton make a presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Any comments from the board or questions you have?
Who's voting?
Voting will be, thank you.
Are we voting on something?
Voting, well, in case we have to vote for something. Uh, okay, so there is a vote for something, I'm going to switch it up right now with, I believe, Cal and Scott will be.
Will they be here voting? I'm just wondering about my time that we've put, well, if there's no voting, then I'll probably.
I can't tell you if they'll be voting or not.
I'm, I'm not recommending any voting, but, I guess, the, I mean, conceptual review is typically, you know, non-binding comments between the board and the applicant. And neither what the applicant says nor what the board says means anything in the future, it just kind of gives the applicant a good idea as to how he can move forward in the future with a future application for a site plan, so.
Then I apologize, I do need to leave, I'm very, very far behind schedule.
If you need to leave, thank you very much for.
I would like to say that I completely agree with Cynthia's comment, though, I think Sully's is a great draw to the Village. And as far as coming up with a plan that both works for them and the safety of the residents and visitors, I think would be great. I'm sure we can come to that agreement. Have a great night, guys.
Great, thank you very much. Well, with that, I think I'll reinstate Leah, bring her back in. Two, three, four, five.
Now, now you don't even need to, everybody, everybody automatically gets to vote.
On something.
When we vote to, uh?
To Jerry.
To Jerry, yeah. Right. But not until Alan's done talking. Okay. Mr. Ye, would you mind stating your name and, and your address, please?
My name is Alan Yeaton, I'm an architect, my address is 1650 Elm Street, Manchester. I'm also a resident of Goffstown.
Welcome back.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't know a little history of this project, and we've all been there, we've all shopped there. We all know what's wrong and what's good about the site, um, but it exists. So, the history is, is correct. All three properties are owned by the trust. The name Sully's and the business was purchased by Associated Grocers of New England. They're going to continue to operate that store, but in, in light of the things that they normally do when they purchase the same kind of thing like they've done Buckton's in Laconia, or Vista Foods in Bedford, they want to redesign it to some kind of community effort. Now, this, this encompasses a whole bunch of people, and early on, I think it might have been February, I met with Brian and Main Street about, you know, what, what they had planned to do, which was basically, how can we prove the, the appearance of the building externally over a period of time, not trying to do it all at once? And so, we went through the process of what would be best to. And so, we went through the process of what would be best to be part of in addition to the building or renovations to the building to meet their immediate planning goals, which is, especially in the wintertime, there's no vestibule. The wind blows in and out of those doors all day long. And so, if we're gonna do something like that, that becomes a major important factor of the design. We still wanna keep the business open, too, while this is going on. So, we're gonna relocate, we're gonna relocate the existing units to the opposite side and discontinue the use of three or four parking spaces while we tore off, I'll call it, the east side of the building facing the library. And so, in the course of doing all that, we're trying to direct things. Now, obviously, I've observed this site on numerous occasions. I know parking exists on three different lots here. I think that's, I don't know, it's essentially all in continuous ownership. The same entity owns all three. They're not different entities.
There is one, the Lions Club owns that corner parcel.
I just, yeah, I'm not talking about the Lions.
That's a popcorn stand.
That's a popcorn stand. That's site number four.
Yes.
Now, the pavement lines don't follow any property line. The owner of the property has over time made modifications to sites that overlap bounds. I mean, there's a retaining wall and ballers and new parking and it's parking out back of the building. And now can drive around the building, which you never used to be able to do.
Well, it's tight now. You used to be able to, then they put that bigger trash compactor.
Oh, they widened that a little since the last time you looked at it.
Okay, definitely.
So, over the course of time, things have been modified on site to improve parking and business. Now, when we come to putting a new entrance on here, we actually extend the building out on the east side five feet. It still leaves us nine feet to the edge of the travel lane. So, the actual addition is nine feet away. Not next to it. We may have to protect it with ballers, but physically there's nine-foot separation between, I'll call it, the center aisle and the edge of the building. But at the same time, there are two handicap spots in front of the building that don't meet anything. There's short, there's narrow, there's, they don't meet any regulations. So, one of the things was to improve the handicap accessibility of the building in terms of patrons. Can't talk too much about the customer when they're in the store because there's no public facilities in there. There's only a staff toilet in the back of the building at the present time. So, what we propose to do is to create an entrance, but at the same time modify both sides, Church Street, the east side, and the one on Mast Road. Those are the three sides with some kind of decorative application. Because one of the things with this building itself is the thermal efficiency of the building is absolutely zero. And so, in trying to improve that, you need to add something to the outside of the building, i.e. insulation and some type of visual treatment. And so, we had planned to do that on the three sides facing the streets. On the backside, because of the dumpsters and utilities and compressors for equipment, it's almost very difficult to do that, although we would probably paint it to be consistent with color. Now, signage. Obviously, there's been signs on that building. I don't know how long they've been there, but I'd been around for 30 years. And that sign's been on the top of that building at least that long. The store was built in 1960, long before there were any, I'll call it, significant regulations to do anything in this community. So, it was built in such a way and expanded upon as time went by. There never was any curbs in front of this building. It was just paved from the face of the building right out to the street, although there's a little depression in the street to show that there is a curb there someplace, but not very visible. So, it's basically used as it has been for the longest I can remember. You drive on the street, you drive into a parking space, you bark out and drive off. And when you can drive on site, I haven't checked any police bladders or whatever to find out if there's been any serious accidents or pedestrian accidents here, but I don't remember hearing anything about that in terms of personal safety on site. And I don't see many people when I visit there that abuse the privilege of driving, although I'm sure there are some. So, the concerns here are the appearance of the building. We're trying to limit the site work. Alls we're trying to do is to modify the front entrance. There'll be no change in site access, travel paths, drainage, open space, lighting. Now, parking is another issue. Currently, I can identify 66 spaces of parking that aren't on the site but associated with the store, because there's like 17 out back that are off-site. Now, the store itself, because of square footage, requires 59, even with the addition. So, we have some excess. Now, the excess I'm trying to eat up in creating handicap spaces that meet the guidelines for width, depth, and signage and the aisle space between the spaces. Now, we can talk about number of spaces on site and number of handicap spots based upon ADA, and I have not checked that. But there's two existing there now. We're gonna delete three to create two handicap, fully accessible handicap spots. On the site plan, there are three X's in front of what used to be the old entrance that people parked right by the front door and they could skip right into the store. Those three spaces would be removed. There would be nothing out in that space. It'd be open space. Now, there was a thought that we would wanna demarcate that space for more community activity, meaning the Girl Scout cookie sales, the soccer leagues, and all those kind of stuff that sell raffles and whatever, someplace where some community activity could take place. And along with this was a small cupboard area in back of this new entrance that could be utilized for that purpose in inclement weather, but also to put undercover, if you've been there recently, the plants that are on sale in front of the door, that kind of stuff, away from the door but over to the side. But also, at the same time, they were thinking they might on a good summer day, they'd be doing a farmer's market kind of thing out there with the products right out there on the side. So, there are some limitations to the building. The phasing of the work would be entrance and parking first, reallocate, restripe around that side of the building, and do the, the front and sides would be second, and then the rear would be last. In terms of the entrance design itself, basically is a three-foot stone apron around the new part of the building underneath the window systems. The rest of it is basically a panel system painted with a green, aluminum window systems, a metal roof on the two additions instead of the rolled canvas awning type structures. And those roofs would be rebuilt to meet the current design standards. So, what am I asking for? I wanna get a building permit without going through the site plan process, because that's what I wanna do, okay? Because I don't think this project demands it. Clear and simple. It's your choice. If I have to submit, it'll be, this project will be, get done next year. If I can go ahead and move ahead right now, it'd be done this fall for whether, that's the only difference. I don't think that what we're trying to do here demands, other than something that working with the Department of Public Works to make sure they're okay with the restriping and the parking situation, and that would be done anyways. In terms of the Main Street, I don't think we're doing anything here that concerns them other than signage. And we all have comments about how we can make things better. I know there's a street design out there that has curbs and curb cuts and reduces the parking to absolute zero here practically on the front of this site. As a property owner, I don't think that property owner's gonna stand up and say, "Yeah, I agree with you." So, we're trying to make it condition better, trying to make the appearance better, because this is the one building in the center of town that needs work on the outside. You have a, you have a, I'll call it, a tenant who leases the building is willing to make that investment in the community. And I think the understanding is that since the abutting properties are, they're all basically owned by the same individual except for the popcorn stand, I don't think we're infringing on anybody's proprietary rights based upon this because it's the tenant that's doing the improvements, not the property owner. But the tenant's willing to go a little ways to help things happen. Still gonna meet with the Main Street on signs. Still gotta go through that process. Still requires a sign permit. I haven't convinced the owner not to put and move those signs around. I'm suggesting new signage to the building. But I don't always win my case. Right now, their thinking is that they'll leave them right where they are. I'm trying to convince them that that's not, probably not the right place to put them when we're done. So, that's my battle I still have to face. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think it's a rather simple project in a very prestigious place which everybody's gonna see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Brian had a comment.
Yeah, just in response to his request to allow him to go straight to building permit, what the development regulation says is in section 4A1, "The planning board shall review and approve or disapprove a site plan for the development or change or expansion of use of tracks for non-residential uses." And I'll stop there because that's where it stops being applicable. But, so, any change to non-residential use is what the, at the planning board is supposed to review as a site plan. Now, there are, there have been some instances where planning and zoning administrator has made a determination that it is a non-material change. But in this case, I didn't feel I could really make that determination because of the changes to the site and the parking and that type of thing. So, I think without me making any type of determination on that, it would be something that the board should, needs to review as a site plan.
Can you read that again, please? The paragraph?
Says, "The planning board shall review and approve or disapprove a site plan for the development or change or expansion of use or use of tracks for non-residential
So, it's, the focus is on the use. So, are you saying that this is a change of use somehow?
No, well, it says change or expansion.
It just says change or expansion of use. So, I would say it's a change to a non-residential site.
It's not a change of use.
Right.
What you're reading is change or development of use, and it's not a change of use. They're still using it as a grocery store. Because I, as I understand it, it's, you know, the, what do you call them? Thermal implications of the primary change that's going on, and I don't see that as a change of use. It's still a grocery store.
Can you read it again?
Yeah. "Planning board shall review and approve or disapprove a site plan for the development or change or expansion of use of tracks for non-residential uses."
Yeah, I mean, it must be change of use, otherwise they'd have to have one to change the siding. I mean, any change in the structure would require it, right? If it wasn't, if we don't read that to mean change of use, if we mean, if we read that to mean a change in the physical structure, they'd have to come with a site plan every time they wanted to change the shingles on the outside of the house.
Well, you're impacting the site by, you know, putting up additional structure. That's typically something the planning board would review and approve.
We can review or approve, but we can also waive the site plan, can we not?
You can waive the site plan. However, that should be done through the appropriate process, but.
Like Chiggy's just was? Because you need notice?
That would be my recommendation. I feel like it's something that, I'm not sure if it's an issue for abutters or not, but I would, I just don't like getting into issues like what we've been in before where if you're not doing things in a public process with a butter notifications, you can get into trouble. And I, I just feel like the town should play it safe on applications, even if it's a simple change. I think that's appropriate.
Brian, could you, no reading the whole thing. There's three things in there that you're talking about, right? Expansion of use? Just say those separate.
Okay, so, for the development or change or expansion of use of tracks for non-residential uses.
Exchange or expansion of use?
Yes.
Exchange?
Change.
Change? Change.
There's a bunch of ors in there, so it's hard to tell, it's hard to tell what the uses is tied.
But it's the same use, though. It is.
It's the same use. Nothing changes. They're kind of.
The use doesn't change. The appearance of it does.
They're offering to improve the appearance.
And the thermal efficiency is a large art detective term today.
So, there's really no change of use and there's really no expansion of use?
Possible expansion.
Possible expansion of use?
Can I address a question to?
Yes, you can.
You, could you describe what the changes would do to the front of the building again, please?
Actually adds 94 square feet to the building out of 11,604.
Ninety-four exactly?
Yes.
That would be the.
Out of 11,604.
And that's to create the vestibule, which is basically a thermal efficiency situation.
And the outside uses that you currently have parking there, but you were gonna expand that into some other uses?
The parking there doesn't meet any standards, so I was gonna take and redo three spaces into two handicap spaces, thereby losing three spaces. I was gonna eliminate those two since they don't meet any standards.
And once again, the other uses are uses to which you are already, for instance, the outdoor farmer's market, bringing your produce outside, and some other things, plants, all those things you're currently doing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
On the Girl Scout cookies, which I've been there, it's actually kinda dangerous now because, you know, when you're kinda like out on the road, it causes zigging by. I think any change there would be, would be great, you know, kinda like create a, because you're gonna create a corner, correct?
It's actually a covered alcove out of the weather. And in certain parts of the times, they can have, sell flowers in there or they can have tables with Girl Scout cookies. I'm always a sucker for Girl Scout cookies.
Right now, you're putting a table basically in the traffic lane.
That's correct.
And with a tent and.
Well, actually, the pavement is marked in front, it's striped in front so that you don't park on it, but I don't know. Some people can't see the lines.
And the parking in front of the building, I, people to get in there, they have to kind of back up and to get in straight to that, and so it's kind of a hindrance.
Well, the thing is, it's striped. And what we've shown in the plan is primarily exactly how it's striped right now. It's been actually field-masured by me, so I think it's fairly pretty accurate in terms of location and distance and numbers.
Phil, you had a comment?
Yeah, and I guess I'd ask Alan, just for clarification, so that I'm clear. What is it? I understand it's conceptual. I understand it's conceptual. What's on here on the, this is my understanding of what you're proposing for the look. And this sign is what your concept of the sign is, not what's existing of the change?
The existing has Sully's written on it.
Is it the same location or?
It's actually moved forward on the building. It's actually a different location.
Okay.
That's why Brian and I have talked about the fact that if I left the signs where they were, they grandfathered.
And I understand.
As soon as I move them. As soon as I move them, they're no longer grandfathered. And I'll have to cross that base on a separate issue, maybe with the zoning board.
Right, okay.
And as soon as the owners give me a definitive yes, no, maybe, then I can do the proper procedure for securing a permit for signage.
Right, right. And basically, just so that I have everything clear, okay? You're looking to bump out on the two sides.
If you see this plan, it's in your package.
It's this and this, you're bumping out.
Right.
And you're adding this in between on the forty-five.
That's what I'm adding is this and this little piece of the vestibule. The rest of all of this is already inside the existing building.
Yeah.
And, and the reason for that is that the, I don't want to get into our store internal redesign. They're pretty happy with the configuration for checkout and people coming in and out and what have you. So, they're not, not so interested in being able to, to move those around.
Yeah, okay.
Basically, they want to operate the store and they want to give it a signature look.
I mean, I, I think, I think it's a good move. I agree with you that it's an improvement on the parking. Yes, technically, you're reducing from three handicap spaces to two handicap spaces, but you're bringing those two into compliance is, is what you're doing. So, it is an improvement. The only concern that I have is that the type of change that you have on there, and I understand what Brian read, and you can read it either way that you want because of the way you have the ors in it. But I think that there should be a public hearing. Because of the change.
Can I ask you a question? Do you think there should be a public hearing like the Chiggy's episode that we just had? Or, like, because they didn't bring, they didn't have all the site plan and everything?
I, I, I don't-
To give a butters a chance to-
Exactly. I, I don't have, I, I'm not, I, I, I think we can waive. The property, as was Alan pointed out, and you look at the date, nineteen fifty-seven is before zoning. If you required a site plan, Alan knows what would be required in the site plan. I mean, you're looking at curbing along Mass Road. You're looking at a number of changes that are, you know, let's face it. What's being done here is an improvement. If, if you want to discourage any kind of improvement, then require the site plan, a full site plan. What do you gain with the requirement of a site plan and bringing everything up to the standard? What, what do you gain?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we could probably find it's not a material change based on the square footage, the percent, I'm trying to do the math in my head, but ninety-four feet out of over eleven thousand five hundred.
Twenty oh seven, oh oh seven five.
So, that's not a, to me, that's not a material change. I'd be willing to say, God, my blessing, go forward today, but if there's a way that we can, in an abundance of caution, make sure that we let the abutters have a chance to, and, and we can move that along quickly, like we just did earlier tonight, probably isn't a bad idea.
A waiver of the formal, of the formal site plan with what Alan has here?
Like, you know, they could make a, whatever Chiggy's did, make a motion to waive the site plan and give, give the abutters their, their notice, and that way, everybody's clear that if they had a chance, they had their chance to come in and discuss it if they had a problem.
And considering it's important to the community, too, I don't think you want to sidestep the public hearing.
Yeah, you know, a change like that, you drive by, you're going to see a change. It looks like a change, but when you get to the basics of it, it's not a material, it's not that you've put on a large addition. You've not made a major change, that you, you've, you've done a facelift, a modify, an improvement on a facelift, you've made an improvement to the handicap spaces. That's basically what they're looking to do. And I, I, I don't see why this, this site plan could be waived. All the formalities of the site plan, just have basically what's here as it, as it's presented and waive the site plan. Outside of the public hearing.
Yes.
Are there resident, anybody else have a comment? Are there any residential-
Yes, there are.
-abutters to this?
Sure there are.
That he doesn't own the property, though?
Back over here, I believe, on-
High Street.
Across the street.
High Street.
Across the street, too.
Because he's an abut, yeah, that's right.
Well, High Street behind this property, though, is-
Is the restaurant.
Restaurant, the twelve. Farmhouse.
You have residences between them?
There's a house right here.
Farmhouse?
No. The house right on the right.
You have, you have residences, sure.
Right up on thirty-eight dash seventy-six on the, what was that, Summer Street?
Thirty-eight seventy-six, yeah.
To the west of the store.
To the west of the store, correct. Exactly behind the This is the farmhouse. Northwest of the store.
And he doesn't own that property also?
Well, he may actually, because it shows on the, Mr. Yettman might give one of them. Yeah, actually, it's, it's the same as it's on the plan. Yeah, so, yeah, so he doesn't, if you look at that, it's the same, it's the same.
Right, so, can-
Yeah, right there, though. Okay, all right. Perhaps, perhaps I was wrong, that I'm thinking that this was in between.
We've got a church.
Thirty-eight seventy-nine would be a residence.
Benicard owns the properties around Sully's that abuts it. Across the street. I don't know who's, uh-
Different owners across the street.
Right. They're commercial, if I remember.
That's High Street Grill right there. That's a residence right here, thirty-eight seventy-nine, correct?
Yeah, I think I was wrong on High Street. I was thinking that I had the two properties reversed, I believe. I, I had the residence in between the two, which, according to the map, it's not there, but.
He's up over there, yeah.
Is there precedent in modern history, in everybody's memory, that's been on this board, for the planning board to grant a conceptual review on an amendment to the site plan without a public hearing? Without a formal site plan?
On a conceptual application, you can't. It's, that's a non-binding thing either way. You can't have any kind of formal yes or no.
You can give me direction, though.
Looks sweet.
What type of-
Get the abutters to say it's okay?
Yeah, can we just get, what type of time are we looking at before we could have a public hearing if we thought that was appropriate?
There's a twenty-day application deadline before the next, before whatever hearing you're going on, so I don't know-
A month?
What that would do, I mean, that would, yeah, basically be a month. If you put it, put it in now, you'd be looking at whatever you can get in a month.
The board can waive with that. We've done that in the past.
What are you talking about? Waive the-
As long as it's-
Twenty-day thing?
Yes.
There's only a certain amount of window you can do with that, though, because-
I know.
You have to put notices out.
All days.
And so, I generally don't budge on that because then Patty gets really angry at me.
You don't want to get Patty angry.
Two of you have been angry at me before. I can have an application tomorrow.
I don't know what that does for the schedule, but I know the planning board isn't having a meeting, the second meeting in August, and we've already hit our deadline and passed for the the first one in August, I believe.
This is a conceptual-
For the last-
This is what the building's going to look like when you've-
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so the meeting in August is on the eighth, and we're already only two weeks away from that, so there's not enough time. I, I believe Patty's already sent out her notices for that.
Did you mention restripe, you're going to restripe with the parking lot?
Just the areas that we reconfigure for the two handicap spots.
In the front of the building. Seal it, seal it black or not, not touch it, right?
The rest of them are all painted nice bright yellow right now.
Right, okay.
So, what's the date of the next meeting after the one he's too late for now?
September twelfth. Because you skipped the twenty-second, and you go to the twelfth.
Can you do this by building permit?
In my opinion, it's, no, but.
And, and that's because that sentence you read us? Or is it a different reason?
I mean, I I don't know if that's the only case of, you know, what, what I could base my determination on as to why that would be required, but I mean, generally, when people come in the door and say, I want to change my exterior of my building or anything like that, the planning board gets their whack at it. I mean, look at the example of Dunkin' Donuts. When the Dunkin' Donuts in Pinnardville came in, all they wanted to do was add a window, a drive-up window, and the planning board said, no, we want you to build, to do a site plan for this. And they went through the whole process, they did a site plan, we helped them, you know, we said, okay, while you're going through site plan, why don't we revise a few things on your site, you know, help you get your access better and help the town get a little bit of a better situation. I mean, it's an opportunity for the planning board to make some corrections where they need to be made, and we realize that this site is not a perfect site, and we could probably make some good recommendations on, you know, how to make it better. And I'm not saying that we necessarily need to do a ton of things on that, but even if it's a condition of approval that just says, do this, you know, maybe they don't have to draw a site plan, but maybe they have to change it in a certain way that adds whatever it may be. I mean, those are the types of, that, that's when the planning board has their crack at it, and if they don't utilize that, then it'll be next thirty years down the road.
Can you remind me what we did when the car wash on Mass Road wanted to, like, change the, add a tarp or something? Didn't they want to add a?
About the shell station.
The vestibule.
At the vestib, yeah, they wanted to just add-
The shell station wanted to, yes, and that went through a-
Relatively simple.
The car, the car vestibule.
Right, just at the car wash part, they just, didn't they want to add something very small, like a?
Yep. And that went through a site plan.
Certainly, yeah, but they had to have a site plan for that, right?
But we can address some things without going through the site plan. Like you said, we can have conditions of approval if-
It'll, going through the site plan process allows you to give some conditions of approval, and there may be some appropriate conditions that could be attached to this.
We just put conditions-
I don't want to interrupt anyone, but Phil, Phil was going to ask a, a question next.
Well, I, I was going to make a comment.
Okay, Phil, we'll come back to you, Leah, thank you.
I perceive a difference between this request than the ones that we've been discussing because this one's existed prior to zoning, okay? The other ones came in after zoning was established. They came in and from their existence, when they, when they were created, they were created with a site plan. This was not created with a site plan. And that was my point, and that's my reasoning. There is a complete difference in my perception between the properties that we're discussing and this property. The fact that there was no site plan when this building was created, and to put this property through a site plan process for what their request is on here to make an improvement to the property, also ADA improvements. I mean, it, the cost of the site plan is going to be more than the cost of the construction. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense. So, that's my perception of the difference on, on the properties. I mean, we're, we're talking, you, you know, completely different animals between those, those things, in my perception.
Who, is anybody on the board suggesting that we should do a site plan? I'm not.
On the board? Is no one on the board suggesting that we do a site plan?
I think the issue is now the public hearing. Is that the question that, in terms of the timeframe we're talking about, are we talking about a public hearing? It's not a site plan, right? Just for clarifications, I'm still the new guy.
Yeah, no, a formal, a formal site plan would be, in order for that to come to this planning board, that they'd have to meet all the requirements that are in the zoning and the regulations and have a formal site plan, you're going to have a presentation like you had from St. Ace over here with all of this stuff, go through all the process between all the departments, go through everything. You're going to wind up with curbing, going to wind up with an entrance over here and an entrance over there, and you may only have thirty-five usable parking spaces for this whole, for this whole thing. The cost of that, the engineering cost of that, and to conform all the requirements to meet those things, you know, as an owner of a property, it doesn't pay. Why do I want to improve my property? I'll just leave everything the way it is. That's what comes down to.
We can waive that, though.
Yeah. What I'm saying is that if they request a formal site plan and we accept basically what's here, perhaps they come in with a little bit more detail of what they want here, maybe something with signage or something along that line, we can, we can waive the formal site plan.
Let's still do the public hearing.
Do the public hearing, have a presentation like we had a presentation with this, with this, and whatever else they want to present. We'll ask questions, there'll be a public hearing, abutters that got notified will come here, they'll ask questions, make comments, address their, you know, with their concerns, they can be addressed, and we go from there.
Make a motion.
No, there's no way, it's-
That's because it's conceptual, right? How does that affect your timetable if we go this route?
I'm not so much, so much worried about the timetable as I'm worried about the client commitment.
Right.
Tell you that right now. I was right on cue. So, I'm looking for, I know, I'm here to get direction from you as to what it's going to take to allow this client to build this addition. So, I'm listening to what everybody has to say here because that affects what's going to go on. That's why I'm here.
I think it's safe to say you'll be good to go as long as there's no, nobody comes in with some out, some unforeseen abutter, you know, problems that, right? Just want to make sure that we don't say yes, and then somebody starts working, and then abutters come running in and say, you didn't even notify me, and now we want a screeching halt to all this, and we're headed down to the courthouse because we didn't get notice, so.
And that's happened before, by the way.
You've also got this letter.
Exactly.
We know there's at least two people on, I know you said that they're not really going to be involved, Main Street people, but apparently, if there was a public hearing, these folks would show up.
I understand.
And what? In support of the changes.
In support, yeah.
So, if the-
Everybody has, everybody is allowed to have their opinion. As we stated earlier, we all don't have to agree with it.
So, if the board directs, we get this noticed in time for the eighth, then Patty can be mad at the board? So if the board directs, we get this noticed in time for the eighth, then Patty can be mad at the board?
I mean, really, it's two, three weeks gonna make any difference.
Probably the chairman.
Should it be hand-delivered?
This isn't that time sensitive, though. It's not like this is a seasonal business that if you don't get this started in the next two weeks, it can't be done, right? Does it really make that much difference if it's?
We don't meet, we don't meet August 25th.
Right. So you're looking at September, whatever that.
September 12th.
September 12th. September 12th sounds.
Any delay, any delay affects time schedules. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you what that is. I don't know off the top of my head. I know there's a contractor lined up right now, ready to go.
My opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to see this, whatever has to happen to make it legal for him to come back at the next meeting of this board, I'd love to see that. Even if it involves making some people mad. What's the, you mentioned 12 days. You had another timeframe. This board's gonna meet again in 14 days?
Yes.
And you can't get this gentleman back if he's willing to come back within 14 days for a public hearing? No?
Well, the. I don't know how it works for applications, but there's a, there's a stated deadline in our development regulations. It says you have to get it in 20 days prior to your deadline, to your meeting.
Has it ever been waived?
I was gonna say, could we waive that?
Where do the 12 days come into play? Is that the?
You gotta work this.
10 days notice, the day before and the day after don't count. So 12 days public notice. Okay. This town and community's always been early and upfront and fast. So they always arrived at plenty of time, so no one had to complain that they didn't receive notice in time or it was not timely sent.
Was it post office issue? Is that?
No, it's the day they posted. Their return receipt requested distribution.
One other thing to remember, if you're gonna send out notices, certified notice of public hearing, in how many days?
It's gotta be, it's 12 days prior to the hearing.
What day are we looking for to have this at, back in front of us?
August 8th.
August, well, that's what they're talking about, August 8th. That's two weeks from today.
Okay. What is, at the end of July and August for many, many, many people?
Vacation.
Thank you.
Who's July?
They're not home to get the notice. And the planning board waived something on a conceptual hearing, on a conceptual, to get it at the next meeting because you guys are on vacation. And you don't have your second meeting in September, so you rushed it through with the notices while all these other people are on vacation so that you could ram this thing through. That's my concern.
Put in a second meeting notice. Let's meet for this purpose.
Instead of canceling it?
I think that it only inconveniences the people in this room for a couple hours.
That would, that would mess up a possible date that I was gonna have a CIP meeting.
This is more important, CIP, in my opinion.
That's right, it's up to us. We won't have a second.
Those meetings at the same time? There are seven.
We could meet on the 22nd.
CIP meeting?
The board can decide whenever they wanna meet. I mean, I'm not gonna tell them.
Does your CIP meeting meet at seven usually?
It's been a tradition of the board to take the second meeting off in August because of vacations.
That, that's, remember, a lot of things are perception.
Right.
Let's put it this way. I'll have an application back tomorrow. And you guys decide what you wanna do with it. Would be the technical way to do it. If you decide you wanna meet, second meeting in August, I'll be here. If it's the 12th of September, I'll be here. But I would like some direction about any additional information we should like to have on this plan.
I'd like to know some more about the sign.
The sign is a non-issue. It requires a separate permit.
Okay, then it's a non-issue.
Unless it's gonna, it's not gonna be one of them blinking LEDs, though.
No, I wasn't concerned about that. I was talking about because it's a roof-mounted sign.
Yeah.
If that's an issue, I might have an answer for it before then, but right now I don't have an answer for it.
Well, I was only bringing that up because if you wanted to relocate a roof sign and it's a new sign and.
I'm really, would like to see new signage on the building in performance to the.
Okay.
He's mounted to the front of the building. There's, there's any number of things that I can do. Generally, the building is quite visible from the street in most, all directions. Whether you be at the intersection here or coming in from the west. So it's, it's a location of signage on the building that will be critical. Maybe one on the Church Street elevation, right there in the very corner. As you're coming down, cause you can see that corner of the building. So we've discussed signage. But their preference is because it's old and original, that it would be nice to use it again.
I think they're right. Nostalgia, cute.
Well, you know, they can't take the sign that's out there in the street, the freestanding one. That's been there as long as the others. That doesn't meet any ordinance in town either. Set right on the property line, over Angers Street. So we're trying to solve the issues that are easily addressed and are more important to the people and the customers. I don't think the sign interferes. It's got a guardrail in front of it and everything else, so. I'll be back to see the board. Not a problem. And I, I will officially submit a waiver of the site plan, just to make it official, a request to waiver site plan.
Mr. Chairman, so if, if, if the Planning and Zoning Office receives an application from this applicant, it would be my suggestion that we call a meeting for August 1st.
I would do that.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Plenty.
From my standpoint and from the client's standpoint, because.
Ryan, would it help you at all if we met at 6:00 instead of 7:00 or with your, the conflict? Does it matter?
We would only, this would only be for one purpose.
Yeah, 6:30 instead of 7:00.
And we have plenty of manpower, I think.
I would keep whatever we can the same, keep the same.
Yeah. I'm, I'm still working on scheduling the other one, so if you're gonna do it, just keep it at the same time.
22nd? You said a 25th?
I think it's the 22nd.
22nd.
22nd, okay. Certainly do that. I know I, I happened to speak with some folks from Associated Grocers and they're thrilled that they're here. They're actually very, very, very happy to.
I'd like, I think Phil made a really good comment, which is perception is important. And I already have my vacation, so I don't care. I don't mind coming back second week in August or whatever it is. But would we do this for any other client? Is it just cause it's Sully's that we're gonna make a special meeting? Or if it was Chiggy's asking for the same favor, would we do that? Or if it was a car wash asking for this favor, would we do that? I'd like to think, yes, we would, cause we wanna be pro-business and help out private business owners, right? Not just cause it's Sully's. Who was Market Master or anybody else, I think we should do this, the same courtesy. So I'd like to stay it for record that I, I vote for coming here in August for any other applicant.
As long as you can defend your position, we're gonna be here anyway.
Shouldn't be a problem.
I probably won't come, but yeah, I think.
You can call him.
I can call him. That's right, we've done that.
Yes, we have.
I'm fine with that.
And four is a quorum, so.
Okay.
Should be covered.
Thank you. For your patience. It's not 10 o'clock yet, is it?
No.
37 minutes away.
Have you ever, no one has to go past, up to 10 o'clock, Alan?
Um, several, Kagan. Go uncounted.
Pass that.
So we will plan on being here on the 22nd of August.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Alan.
All right, well. We have an extra, we have.
I'm sure.
Meetings, upcoming meetings, August 8th.
I'll be famous, right?
We have an August 8th three lot subdivision on Patty Hill Road. September 12th, CIP presentation. Correspondence and FYIs. Uh, let's see. Notice of subdivision for Steve, Stephen Drewan for property along Violet Street and Wilken Street in Bedford. This was recently approved by the Gostown Planning Board, but became a portion of the property is located in Bedford. The Town of Bedford must approve it as well.
Basically, I mean, that plan just, and I think it's gone through the Bedford Planning Department now as well and they've approved it. So basically, all we have to do is get Bedford and Gostown Chairman to sign the plan and then take it to get reported and.
I think, isn't it the same thing we did with Manchester? The other one on Manchester? So it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's very similar thing, but yeah, different town.
We have a notice of antenna. Co-location in the city of Co- thank you. I've never seen that word.
I had to replace two.
You know that. Town and City Magazine, July, August 2013. We've got a copy of that. That's pretty good and, but he's available.
Oh, did we, did we discuss these?
I think that was listed.
You should've got it in your package, I think. Did you get?
No, that's just one for the chat for the committee, I think.
Oh, you know what? I think he said something.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, yes, 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 yes. It's right here in front of me.
Oh, Municipal Association, that's, what's his name, Johnston, Cordell's organization.
I don't retain what I read anyways.
Still retaining that, but you can read it.
Things that we can address in the.
As long as, as long as they're addressing.
Email from TF Moran, addressed comments for St. Anselm's Dormitory. Okay, we, that's all approved, so there you go. Letter from Sewer Commission stating sewer is available for Chiggy's Restaurant, Blue Green Wall. There's something else on this. Additional comments, yeah, so, okay, this is Sully's super application from the fire department.
Yeah, that's this one here. And I don't think it's anything that can't be addressed.
Something that we can talk about when they come back through.
Right. And the intent to cut permit for Swanson, map 12, law 2, Shanty Road.
I think it's supposed to be Shanty Road.
Shanty.
Shanty Road, okay. S-H-A-N-T-Y. And that's just an FYI, if anyone's.
Last item on the agenda was the rules of procedures and I have to apologize, I never made the updates as we had discussed from last time, so we'll have to put that on the next one. And then also you got your, in your packets, the copy of the Plan Pinnardville Community Plan. And that's the final draft. You'll most likely see something, if not just like that, very similar to that in September when we bring this to the planning board for a public hearing and proposed adoption by the planning board, so.
Did you print these in house?
Yeah.
You didn't hear. So it's not part of, the contractors have got the $50,000 grant. They didn't pay for this.
No, not to print the copies that went to the board, no. We just, it was part of our printing budget, so.
I got a question, before you move on from the Plan Pinnardville, you mentioned recommendation to the planning board for adoption. And when you, when you say that, do you mean adopt it as a reference document? Or we, or we pull out of here specific recommendations recommended by the planning board to voters for the warrant in March?
No, what we're gonna, well, I think what'll happen is the ad hoc committee is gonna meet. They're gonna recommend, or not recommend, I guess, they're gonna vote whether or not to recommend this as a master plan amendment. And so this would be basically an addendum to the master plan itself. And then in a few more months, we'll get the code that will then go to the voters for voters. So this is like half of the project right here. This is not everything. You're gonna get another document that will be all the proposed code regulation changes that would then go to the voters. Right.
If they pass through the planning board has recommended.
Right. Wow. Either way, they're gonna end up getting, well, the planning board, I guess, does have to recommend, put it on the ballot. Because it wouldn't be a petitioned article unless it became a petitioned article by someone.
Right.
So.
And the vendor is gonna write those codes? Write the language for that?
Yes. So they, they've come up with a draft, which we, we'll be presenting as soon as we can to the ad hoc committee and then, once that's been reviewed by the committee and, and everything, then we'll put it out to the public. Same as what, right now this is, we're currently in the middle of our 30-day public review for the plan. And we're, you know, allowing for anyone to submit comments on the plan. And if there are any, then we'll take those and review them and consider them and decide whether or not to make any adjustments to the plan based on what the comments are, so.
The code you get, you would end up having to put that into the New Hampshire RSA legalese for the warrants. You don't expect them to deliver something ready for a ballot, do you?
Well, what we expect is that it would be written basically to the point of being ready to fold into our zoning ordinance. So we would basically create it as like, we've got 17 sections in the zoning ordinance right now. We would create it as the 18th section and just put whatever regulations would apply to Pinnardville into that 18th section, so.
And you're still inviting changes to this?
We assume, we assume right now that it's pretty much to the point where it needs to be to, to come to the planning board. But we obviously realize that, you know, the public needs a chance to review whatever final draft is there and make any comments on it. And so, you know, if there are comments that still need to be made and, and adjustments that need to be made, we'll take it into consideration.
For example, on the very last page, page 81, says, "Thank you for your interest in this community plan. It is the hope of its authors, including the participating members of the Pinnardville community, that this plan will be adopted as part of the Town of Gostown's master plan." And it goes on. So I'm pretty sure not every person in the Pinnardville community wants to adopt this as part of the master plan. So some of this is a little presumptuous. I, I hope that the public will take a look at it and, and be, and look at it critically and provide some feedback.
Good comment.
So when, when do we vote on inclusion of this in the master plan?
Scheduled date right now is the September 12th meeting.
So that, that's the date, the review of is the vote on, okay.
Yeah. So it's actually probably a good thing that you guys voted to, or decided you wanna have another meeting to. And that'll keep other things off of that agenda perhaps. And that'll keep other things off of that agenda perhaps. And we'll be able to get things, get this one maybe its own time on the, on that meeting agenda, so.
Didn't we have something last year that came down from, I think the Regional Planning Commission about energy efficiency or energy plan?
We had an energy plan.
And they wanted us to put it in the master plan, but this board just said, no, we'll accept it as.
It's just a, it's just a document.
As a document, a reference document, right? So we can do the same thing for this, or less. I'll have to think about that.
Anything else we'd like to discuss?
Second.
Third.
Okay, all in favor?
Who's the voting members?